It is seven oh one. Call the meeting in order, we have a call, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, void, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, there are no amendments to the agenda. No one has signed up for public participation. So we will start off with Department of Work. Sierra?
All right. Hello, everybody. Can't believe it's already August and everything has flown by in the blink of an eye. So I have been out for the past six months on maternity leave, so I'm just gonna give you guys just kind of a quick update as to what I'm aiming to do this school year versus what I did towards the end of last school year, because obviously my time was spent a little bit differently this past year. All right, so a new school year is great and it's exciting, but for a lot of kids it is not. It can be a nightmare for a lot of students. There's, you know, a lot of different challenges, social, emotional, academic, and I know that it's been said in the years prior, but truly we are living in a mental health crisis. There have been five suicides in our area in the past six months, one of which was my cousin. So we definitely are all kind of seeing that hit home and definitely seeing it in our students. They are dealing with a lot more than just homework and, you know, social issues, they're dealing with things at home, they're dealing with the mental health disorders and other things, you know, that we don't see on a regular basis, and they're really good at hiding, they're really good about putting on a smile or just hiding away from the world. So my goal this year is to have all the students know how to reach out for help and how to get access to those mental health resources. A few of the ways that we are doing that is at the middle school, Victoria Smichael and I are making a page through campus where we can put our contact info and it'll take you directly to our emails where they can email us. It'll also have resources, coping skills, mental health links, things of that nature. I'm going into the high school class, the health class, to give a QPR discussion, which stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer to Suicide Prevention Program. At College Corner, we, I will be doing monthly lessons in the upper grades on mental health, other topics, coping skills, organizational skills, things of that nature. We do continue to partner with Meridian and Centerstone for outside support. They are wonderful and we're great to, we're very grateful to have them, and hopefully they, you know, add more people to our, you know, school program here because we're in desperate need of extra help. And also for the middle school, we need volunteers for Challenge Day. Challenge Day is where some raw and unfiltered emotions come out in a very supported environment. We have people that come in, lead us through different exercises, so if you or anyone you know might be interested in volunteering for the day, please let us know, because we still need about six volunteers for that. That is August 26th, and it starts at eight AM. Yep, it is coming up very quickly.
It starts at what time?
Starts at eight AM, and they're usually done by three fifteen.
Who, who should we let know?
You can let me know, or you can also email Victoria Smichael, she's the one that's in charge of it. I'm just kind of trying to find volunteers to help her, so. Yep, we would gladly have you come and participate. Most of the time volunteers are paired with five or six students in a small group for the group-led discussions, otherwise the rest of the day is everybody as a whole doing the exercises.
What day of the week is that?
I'm sorry?
What day of the week is that?
That is a Tuesday.
And how many are you looking for?
We're looking for six more volunteers. Because the smaller the groups for Challenge Day, the better conversations can have versus having bigger groups, and it's a lot harder to meet all the objectives of the day.
And is this for everyone?
This is just for the eighth grade.
Eighth?
Yep. And it is sponsored by Reed Health.
Hi, everyone, I'm Ashley Knox. I am also the social worker for the high school and for Liberty Elementary. So we're also trying to implement some things, like Sierra said, trying to make sure that everybody knows how they can contact us. This year I'm going to a lot of high school classes and their SELs, as well as the health classes, just kind of introduce myself, what I can do to help them in the school, and how they can contact me as well. We also started at the end of the year, last year, started a Google document where if they need me or any of the guidance counselors, they can go to that Google document, request whatever they need, a short description, who they want to talk to, and then that automatically gets sent to my email so that I can be very productive on that. With the elementary, I do social and emotional learnings with the fourth and fifth graders. That went extremely well last year, and they all asked if I would be willing to go again this year, and so we are going to be starting that next week. So it's ten lessons for each of the grades, and then we go over a little review, if they have any questions, just go over any coping skills and stuff like that to kind of get them through the year and get them ready for middle school as well for those fifth graders. So that's kind of what we've been working on and hopefully continue to do that this year. Thank you, guys.
I would tell you that we got to read the other day, the plan that these young ladies have put in place for the school is excellent. And, you know, just to hear what they're planning to do, I look forward to a great year for them.
Anyone have any questions?
I wondered, where do you see the highest need, grade level wise? I mean, I know it's everywhere, but...
Um, I can't speak for Ashley, because I don't, you know, work specifically with her population too much anymore. Last year, I would say the greatest need was with our maybe seventh graders or so. Would you guys agree? We had kind of a rough patch there with the second grade. Obviously, all of the grade levels need some extra support, and we are starting to see a lot more mental health needs in our fourth and fifth graders at the elementary level, a lot more suicidal ideation or, you know, self-harming in that area, which is very scary, because those kiddos, you know, aren't supposed to be, you know, as grown up in this real world as they are, which is why Christina and I talked, and we want to, you know, just try to get to those kiddos a little bit sooner. Ashley, do you?
Yeah, so kind of in the high school level is where I see it the most, not so much at the elementary level, at least this past year hasn't been as high, but definitely in the high school levels, it's been the younger ones, kind of ninth and tenth graders have been the hardest ones. A lot of, if not suicidal thoughts, it's threatening others as well, so kind of making sure that where that's stemming from and how we can help them in those situations. But we have a lot of crisis stuff in place for that, and people have been really good about contacting me, like, hey, we have this person threatening themselves or threatening others, a good process for that, making sure we're contacting his parents and getting them the resources they need to make sure that they're safe and protected outside of school.
That was my next question about parental resources, like, is there a family night or parent resource night or anything like that, or would it be beneficial?
Yeah. We did that, I think, my first year here. Oh, cool, thanks, buddy. I did have my first year here, and it overall didn't go very well. I think we had less than ten parents show up. I'm not against something like that, but typically what I do to try to reach those parents is if we have a crisis, I have packets of whatever it is, and I give it to the parents, whether it's suicide, whether it's risk, mental health resources, and I just send it home with them directly, and that seems to work better, at least in my areas.
Anytime that we have a crisis situation like that, I always recommend and send them those packets where we have the local therapists and counselors, that if they want those outside services, or we also have Centerstone and Meridian, I always make sure, like, hey, I'd be more than happy to help you kind of set that up, talk to our Centerstone and Meridian, make sure that that process goes smoothly. For the elementary level, whenever they have math and science days, I work with Lisa on having my own little booth where we, I will bring those resources as well, so if anybody walks by and they want any of those resources for additional information, it's there.
When is that, I'm sorry?
Um, so it's, the past was when they had the, the costume, the, um...
Wax.
Was it the, Wax Museum, thank you, yeah. And then the other time was when they had, was it the math, math day, math and science day, where parents come and they look at their children in their wax museum or different science and math projects. So one's in the beginning of the year and one's more towards the end of the year.
So my question is, and maybe, as a minister, everybody has an open house, right? I mean, I'm sorry, it's been a while since I've had one, but like, high school has an open house, middle school, I know, I'm a treehouse, open house, like, do you make yourself available, do you say anything at the open house so kids know, is that before they even come in, or parents know, or you guys presenting at those open houses at all?
I personally haven't been, I don't know if you have been, but I did call, we had a swap meeting this morning with the high school where they want our presence to be known there, and I was more than happy to say, yeah, go to those open houses and give those resources and talk to parents, too. So I think that's a great idea.
I know you said you haven't done one since you're here, but I'm just wondering, with you mentioning the suicides in Union County, I think it, it might be a good time to have another parent meeting, and if, if you bring up the reason is because of the suicides in Union County, I think you might get a lot more parents attending. I mean, it might be the time to do it.
Yeah.
I just thought the open house would be a good time that you might think about, because it's not targeted for a certain topic, it's, we're covering everything and it gives the information, and then on, I don't know, you're not singling out people, you're just here presenting.
Yes, of course.
Well, you're at, I'm sorry?
No, I was just telling them, good luck.
Thank you.
What was your average case load in the high school last year?
So it ran anywhere from twenty to thirty kiddos, it was pretty high, to where I had to do kind of every other week type sessions, just to make sure I was covering it all, but probably roughly around twenty to thirty. It is less this year, because a lot of the seniors were on my caseload, but I do see with the upcoming freshmen and getting back to that number as well.
You see, or how many?
I would say at the middle school, probably that thirty range, at College Corner, probably closer to fifteen, and a lot of those kiddos graduated up to the middle school. And I think Ashley, unfortunately, is receiving quite a few of mine from eighth grade, so we've already met to discuss those transitions and what that looks like for this year, especially because I was, you know, out, so I'm not sure who, who needed it and who didn't, so we had a pretty good conversation and gave a plan for that as well.
I even wonder, I know prevention, the prevention program is here, too. Do you guys do anything about, I know you're really drug and related, but do you do anything about?
Actually, there's a lost, a guy that wants to put a lost team here in this county, and so he's looking for people to join that lost team, and the reason I know about him because he's funded by DMHA, like, I'm funded by DMHA, so he's like in my realm, so I can forward you his information, because he does want to start a lost team, what do you call it?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. I think we're so little, we don't have all the resources, but when we all work together, we can get it down here.
Definitely.
I'm glad to hear Centerstone and Meridian are still a part of it, and I assume that they kind of go from you to them, like, if you see that they're needing the additional support, but you're probably still checking on them?
Yep. We, we try to, you know, meet the need, when the need is no longer met, we move on to outside services. A lot of the times, if they're doing really well in those outside services, we try to take that step back and then move in the next direction of the next family. We do have some kiddos, though, where it's, everybody is on the same team, and we're just constantly, you know, trying to surround them because they just need a little bit extra.
Well, thanks for all you do, I hope you take care of yourselves, too, because that's a heavy load.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to building updates, I know everyone missed being here last month, we'll start with College Corner.
You can see enrollment numbers there from this time last year, we were at two sixty-six, so we are down, however, four of our kids went to Liberty for the applied skills room, so we're down about ten kids. So definitely, definitely down on enrollment. Some upcoming events, we have pep rallies coming up the next couple of months, there's the September one and the October one, where we celebrate our character traits, winners of the month, we're doing a Fall Fest we do every year in the fall, that's going to be on October third. We've had a great start to the school year, last week I think I was living in a dream world, today the honeymoon fell off just a little bit, it must have been the Monday, but it's all good. We had some new staff there that are doing an awesome job. Tricia used to teach title, she is back as an aide and is loving that. Talon is, is working in kindergarten, and Brandy came over from Liberty, she's teaching kindergarten, so we're welcoming them. You can see lots of smiling faces there in the first week and first couple of days of school. Fourth graders make duct tape wallets, they do a token economy, and they have to keep track of their money and pay rent and all kinds of fun stuff, so that's that picture there, but we've had a good couple of first days. Any questions?
Oh, how's your building?
Oh, that's a great question, yeah, I thought about that afterwards, I said, I should have put pictures in. You need to come in, it really looks a lot better than I, I honestly thought it was going to. It, it really is going to be, I think, more secure, I mean, they can't get out into the school building. Still some kinks to work out with the construction being right up until school, but honestly, it looks really nice.
Are they done?
Mostly, mostly, I'd say mostly.
Yes.
Yep, thanks.
Moving on to the high school.
I'm just going in order, oh, I got them. Okay. If you look at enrollment, we're a little bit ahead of where we thought we would be last year, but I printed this, this morning, these statistics or enrollment numbers, and we lost one today, so we're down to three fifty-one. We do have two or three students that we think are going to withdraw. Mike and I made a home visit to College Corner today, and we had a student whose mother came to the door, they're moving to Camden, Ohio, and she's going to enroll him in an online school, so we're going to go up and down the next week or so, probably by the next board meeting, I'll have a firm rumor, but if, if you look at the projections, we were projected to be at three fifty-one, and that's exactly where we're at right now, but I think it's going to drop two or three more. That's, that's okay news, some good news is, we have two programs that we're trying to improve upon, our band and our football team. I will tell you, we currently have twenty-seven students in band, they're all going to participate in our pep band at the football game. There are three students who, because of their schedule, couldn't get a band class in their schedule, but they're doing independent study, they're going in during our SRT period, and there's even one that his grandmother brings him to middle school early, so he's meeting with Mr. Albright at the middle school before he walks over to get classes started at the high school. So we're, we're expecting to have pretty close to thirty kids in our band, when we ended last year, we only had low twenties, and all of those kids didn't participate in the pep band, so things are looking up there. Football, we, if, if you follow the football team last year, you know, we ended the season with somewhere around twenty-two, twenty-three players, not all of them were healthy and playing at the time, but they were still on the team. This week, we have thirty-five players, so that's a good start. So Mr. Albright and Mr. Higgins are doing a good job of recruiting. If you haven't had a chance, stop by the high school, come into our new alumni room, it will probably be locked during the day, so come and get me, I'll let you in there. The alumni group here in Union County is very active, and they're wanting to grow in, and I think this room will be something for them to show off and be proud of. We did get a new window to our bookstore where the applied skills and other treats in the morning, so stop by sometime in the morning and get some coffee from the kids, they are learning to deal with the public, deal with their peers, and deal with me, give them a hard time. I'd like to thank Jeff Circa for getting that nice sliding glass window put in there, so you can actually see all the merchandise inside the bookstore, they're selling shirts and hats and things like that. We couldn't necessarily see it all last year with the door that lifted up, and it was a much smaller window. There's a picture of open house, we have a hundred and seven freshmen, and there's only fifteen of them that did not show up to get to their schedule, so we're very proud of that turnout. Next year, I'm going to try to flex the teachers' schedules, so they come in a little bit later that day, so they can stay later in the evening and be present during the open house. Just some summer school information, we had forty-three students enrolled in high school summer school, those forty-three students earned sixty-seven credits, we don't allow them to get more than two, some only needed one, so they only got one. On top of those numbers, we had thirty-three students earn supervised agricultural experience, many of you know that's called SAE during the summer, so we actually had a total of seventy-one students earn a hundred credits for the summer, and that puts them well on their way towards earning a high school diploma on time. Last thing I want to mention tonight is, we are struggling to find an athletic trainer. The organization that supplied us with the trainer the last few years can't find anyone, Reed Health can't find anyone, we do have most of the football games covered, but even then, they told us that if someone gets hurt at another event, they're not going to send that trainer that they're going to send to those events, so we're struggling right now, so Dan and I and Ryan are going to try to work on a plan to get a trainer for our other athletic events. This is something new, we've had, for the last several years, we haven't had to pay for, for one, we've had those donated to us by Reed Hospital and what's the other health program?
Allied.
Allied. So we're going to have to come up with a plan, because we absolutely have to have a trainer, and if we spend a little bit of money now to hire a trainer, maybe we won't be caught in a situation that costs us a lot of money later, so I wanted to run that by you and let you know that we, we're struggling, we're going to, we're going to start recruiting and hopefully find someone to take that position.
What does that consist of? Like, what, what do you have to have, an athletic trainer certification?
You have to have a, yes.
Or is that a, I don't know anything about it, like, a four-year degree, or what is it?
I would, yes, it is, yeah, and Dan's mentioned that we may contact Miami to see if they have any people that are already certified, have their, maybe even hire someone that's intern, that we could have an adult with them and supervise them, but we're, we're in a pickle right now, and we're not the only ones, there's a shortage, just like there's a shortage of teachers and a shortage of athletic trainers right now, so. I know it's a great expense for the hospital and the organizations that have been supplying those to us in the past, so if we can come up with some money towards that, we'll have a much better opportunity to hire someone, but we have to have someone.
A few years ago, McCullough Hyde supplied it, because I was going to physical therapy, and he, he worked there, and he was a Union County trainer.
Yeah, they, they aren't supplying anyone for us either, Brian's talked to them, so we'll have to probably put some skin in the game to get someone.
So as of now, just to wind clear, we have coverage, or we don't, or if...
We have coverage for three of the home football games.
Right.
There will be trainers that work for Reed at, they've looked at the schedule, I had two more of the football games, so football, we're in decent shape, but we don't have anyone for volleyball, cross-country.
Soccer.
Soccer, yeah, and we definitely need someone for soccer.
But you lost me on the, if something happens, are you saying if there's an event, another football game at Lincoln, someone gets hurt over there, our representative is going there, and then we're without a one, or, you had said something about it, but if someone gets hurt?
So, sort of like that, yes, if, if...
So they're covering, they're staying here but covering other locations, or?
They are, Reed said they're not going to allow whoever they send us to go to other events right now, because they, they need them to work for other schools. Now, there will be a trainer, let's say we play a, a team that has a trainer supplied by Reed, and they come here, they will help out in an emergency situation, but they're not going to wrap ankles before the games, they're not going to do any evaluating, they'll just be there on an emergency basis, just like the EMS guys that will come to our game. So we need to make sure all of our athletes are being evaluated by someone that's certified, if they need to be sent for an x-ray, we need someone saying, go get an x-ray. You have to be careful, because sometimes you go to the emergency room, that doctor will say, well, you need to stay off the field for five weeks, whereas a trainer who's certified might say, well, let's evaluate this as we go along, and you might get your athletes back a lot quicker, so. It's not a good situation to be in, but Dan and Brian and I see what we can do in the next few days to hire someone.
Have you tried Hendrick County?
I don't know if he's tried that or not.
Kettering Health has also kind of moved into the Oxford area, I don't have, that would be another resource.
Hendrick County has tripled their program the last two years.
Kettering even has places in like Eaton and things like that.
Any other ideas, those are good ones.
So as far as like football, soccer, those are just the most common sports for concussions, who is doing evaluations if there is any type of concussion, we don't have any, other than what the coaches are supposed to go through their online training to look for?
Yeah, we'll have to send them to a physician.
Okay.
Hopefully they have insurance.
All right, moving on to LES.
Good evening, we are sitting at three hundred twenty-eight students, we are down twenty-one from last August, and that three twenty-eight includes Christina's four, so not great news there either. We had a great open house, we did an iSpy theme this year, we had two hundred ninety-three of three hundred twenty-eight families that attended, so it was a packed house for the hour that we were here, kids were excited to be back. We did chalk the walk the day after that, I had several families show up, and they kind of decorated the, in front of LES and down the sidewalks, just to welcome the kids back. I put some summer school statistics, Christina and I both just focused on second and third grade based on the iReed scores that, or iReed test that was taken, so I had fourteen second graders and seven third graders attend. We also included some math remediation. We have a lot going on around the building, as you walk around, you'll see lots of things going up on bulletin boards and students already working. I walked down the kindergarten first grade hallway and stopped dead in my tracks, because the first graders, who are still kindergartners, right, they're babies, have complete sentences up on the wall, and they're, they read the first aid jitters and then wrote about their jitters, and it was just amazing to see the progress that they made for when they came in at the beginning of kindergarten last year. And then I put some more pictures of our iSpy theme that the teachers did around the building, we had word searches with class lists on them, just kind of cohesive and made it fun to enter the building this year. Any questions?
I know it's sad when enrollment's down, but your class sizes are smaller, there's benefit.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
And the middle school.
Looking at enrollment, we are almost exactly where we were at the end of last year, we lost a hundred and seven eighth graders to freshmen, and we picked up a hundred and five, so, but through some new enrollments, we're actually up two than what we were last year at the end of the years, or last year at the beginning, beginning of year this time. So we are doing okay on enrollment. We had open house on Monday. It went really well. A lot of families showed up and picked up their schedules and got to meet their teachers. Kind of took away the sixth grade locker fiasco and didn't let, didn't let them go to their lockers, which is usually like our big headache. We let them practice with their locks, but we kept all our stuff in our SRTs and the teachers kind of walked through how to organize their locker and kind of gave them some more direction. So we really liked the way that was set up. We also extended our open house for another 30 minutes for just sixth grade, sixth grade orientation to kind of get the building a little bit quieter and let them calm down and kind of settle in so that they had some time to ask those personal questions and things to help parents feel confident about sending their kid to middle school. We know it's kind of a scary time. So we were really happy with that turnout though. This first week, we've been doing RISE stations. So every morning during our SRT time, our student resource time, we set up stations around the building with different staff members leading those and where they just leave little talks about how to show respect, integrity, safety, and empathy in all the aspects of their day. So you can see that if you get a magnifying glass, it'll help you read it maybe a little bit better, but just like the different expectations around the building, just to reinforce that everywhere they go those first weeks. If you flip on the backside, I did include our iLearn data. Our iLearn data is there at the top. We are below state average right now across the board. When you compare to the other schools in our area, our sixth grade is standing out as being well below some of the other schools in our area. But if you think about how we run our sixth grade compared to how they run their sixth grade, their sixth grade, a lot of times they're in their elementaries. Or even if they're in their middle school, they have a more elementary schedule. And so they're spending more time on that math and language every day than what we get. So we are looking at some strategies to combat that this year. Our sixth grade, instead of taking a fourth elective, our sixth grade's going to have math every day instead of every other day. Our language, we are working on ability grouping and providing some more opportunities for some high ability classes and to get some small class sizes. And then also working on multi-tier systems of support during our SRT time and looking at some grouping and some options to be able to provide some support there. But we do, we do find that the block scheduling at the middle school level kind of, and even regular, like with an eighth period day, it really reduces our math language time when you compare it to the other schools around us at that sixth grade level. When you look at seventh and eighth grade, we're more closely like connected to the other, with other districts in our area with what they do with their sixth, or their seventh and eighth grade. And so our scores are more in line with the areas around us. Then we broke it down with different free and reduced lunch, special education, male and female. So you can kind of see us compared to the state and how that broke down. And then also if you wanted to track sixth grade overtime, seventh grade overtime, eighth grade overtime. And then down below that is that cohort. So that eighth grade class last year, what their scores look like at the bottom, from fifth grade all the way to eighth grade and so on. So if you wanted to look at that data a little bit further, I can ask some questions. I just wanted to share that data with you. And then we are also still having a library aid, which we've had a couple of interviews with. We'll probably end up going ahead and moving forward with a hire so we can get it fully staffed. But we have been actively seeking and filling all our roles. So that's, that is our last one to fill. That was our, when our office was working out of the library, I wasn't too quick to put a librarian in there because we were using her space, or space. So we will be moving forward with that because on Friday, our office was able to move in to the new office. It's not completely done, but it is move-inable. So we are, we are up and ready and using the facility as intended.
So these scores are current sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade or last years?
Yep, because this is last year's data.
Okay.
Very interesting. What you think contributes to this? Just all these. So it looks like it's really been the last couple of years that I see the delta getting bigger. I think we're around state whatever, but when I see 10%, 8% difference, just curious if you have any. Obviously, what you do in the math every day, you're starting to address that. But I'm just curious if you think, what are some contributing factors to that?
I think there could be many contributing factors that add. Like we are getting this, you know, COVID kids through. So there's a last couple of groups that hit like third, fourth grade, some critical thinking years in there. It is when we switched and after that to block scheduling. And so not saying the block scheduling is bad, but teachers having experience with the extended class, working, it's a different style of teaching. So, and then the commitment to that and our kids used to being in a middle school with the middle school kind of freedoms and responsibilities, but also focusing on that. But we also have had a lot of staff turnover. We've had a lot of admin turnover. We had, you know, so it's all, there's so many.
You're not alone.
Yeah, there are so many factors that really could go into that. We could, you know, talk about that a lot. But math, I know, has had, and, and big things that we couldn't avoid. But for teachers to be out or, you know, to be on extended leave.
The COVID stuff makes sense. So UCMS 25 was last year's sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders.
Yes, 2025 was when we took.
And that would have been the first year of the block scheduling.
The eighth graders, you mean, would have been the first group? Is that what you mean? Your eighth grade was the first group?
When they were in sixth grade.
Was that the first group that did block? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, how many years you been doing block scheduling? Didn't that just come in a year, year and a half ago?
We did it during COVID, or during the year after COVID. So 2020, 2020, 2021 was block scheduling. And then they went back to a regular schedule.
Right.
And then they went back, so 21, 22, they went back. And then 22, 23, they went back to the block schedule. So that's been three years, right?
I don't know, I'm trying to understand, isn't that what John put in was block scheduling?
I think so.
Right, he was the one here, what, a year and a half?
Or was that at the high school? Was that, was there a discrepancy, like the high school was going to do one?
The high school's been on block since 2020, since COVID.
Yeah, since 2020. And we got off it, but then went back on. Due to the amount of teachers we share.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just looking at things and trying to figure something out. I'm not saying, right, I'm just trying to get my facts straight.
Yeah, that is something.
Because if that's something that you think is not good, you know, maybe we need to look at that. I don't know. I guess I'm asking your opinion.
Exploring that, we have really kind of adopted the mindset when it comes to hiring in teachers and that we've provided more elective teachers in our building that work there all the time. And so just, just flip a switch and go back without block. We, we don't have licensed teachers to kind of flip that.
Not saying we would, I'm just trying to, right.
Definitely something to talk about. It's a data point.
It's just a trend. I'll just, I just want to keep an eye on it. And I'm just trying to figure out if there was a trigger to be that.
Absolutely. And that's something, it's definitely something to look at and to discuss further.
But the COVID thing definitely makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, moving on to accept donations. We have a total amount of $715. Dave with a motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to consent agenda. So move. Dave with a motion.
Second.
Drew with a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to old business, college board updates.
Okay. There is a new parking lot now where when you pick up your kid, it's.
It's also very nice.
It's really nice. I experienced it Friday.
Waiting on the striping to occur, but like it is really nice.
Yeah, I, I even parked in it yesterday. So that, it's finished except for the striping.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it really looks nice. So that's well done. The renovation, I saw it and I agree with Christina. It looks so much better than I anticipated. It's really nice. I'm quite impressed. So, but if you'd been there 10 days ago, you couldn't take any bets whether it was going to be done. As far as the school board, we approved the yearly reports and they went to the auditor's office. So that was taken care of. And that's about it.
I had a question. I saw that striping on Facebook. Is it going to go the other way?
It's going the right way. That's my husband and his Google Earth skills.
Okay.
I can't believe I did that. My son's already done now.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be right.
I was like, oh, it looks so great. I wonder if it's going to go the other direction.
Because we've been parking that way all day.
Oh, one more thing. Lynn is gone and our new superintendent took over at our meeting last week. So we've started the school year with a new superintendent.
Things going on okay so far?
It's gone perfect.
Okay, moving on to item nine, superintendent contract discussion.
Yeah, when I was recommended for the position by Dr. McDaniel, there was a difference in what the contract read when I received the contract. I was to be reimbursed for mileage. And I said, I don't want to be reimbursed one way from my house to here. That's what happens with most employees. They don't get pulled back, back and forth two ways. So I'm just asking for the board to consider that.
So on the contract that we approved at the last meeting in July, the mileage was not earned.
The amount was, just not the mileage?
Yes.
Do you need a motion?
Right, I see it on here, but I didn't see a motion. Second.
So I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Susan with a motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
If you want to say some time, that probably could just be an amendment to the contract.
Have y'all signed it? Because I don't have the signed copy yet.
Should have, should have a signed copy.
Whatever's easiest. If it hasn't been signed, you want to put another line in the contract, that's fine, but deal with contract. You can, you can just amend it. All right, just go ahead and add the contract there.
I didn't sign it.
Okay. Okay, moving on to new business. FFA field trip request.
Second.
Daryl with a motion, just for a second. Any questions or discussion? Everyone's got a copy of what that includes in the packet. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item 11, first merchants lockbox. That's.
At First Merchants, we have our lockbox where we keep all the titles and everything in. It still has Zach and Debbie on there. I don't know if y'all know that Zach passed away a few weeks ago. And then we're going to add Sarah and Lisa on so they can also go drop stuff off and get things on as well.
So move. Dave with a motion.
Second.
Drew with a second. Any questions or discussion?
How's that motion read? How's it going to read?
To change the names on the lockbox?
Yes, it will, it will say. They told me how to word it. I don't remember what it said right now, but First Merchants, the change of the agreement for who can access the lockbox or something that that.
Who can open it? You mean who can open it?
Right, because we have a key and they have a key, but right now Debbie, Zach and I are the only ones allowed to do that.
They have the signatures, so technically nobody can get in the box right now.
Oh, I mean.
Do you want to amend your motion or just state anything specific?
Just the signature cards is all they need.
That's what they call that. Yeah, the signature card.
The R and T card.
Will they allow you to put a title versus a name or do you have to be specific?
They actually have to.
Yeah, I know, if you put a title.
Drew, you fine with the signature card? Okay, so Dave with a motion, Drew with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, item 12, joint agreement with ECI SS. And everyone's got that copy in the packet as well?
Twice.
Twice. Just got all the corrections in there, Daryl.
You got red light.
It's easier to see on that one. Dale, entertain a motion. So move. Daryl with a motion.
Second.
Did I miss hear something down there?
No.
Okay, Daryl? Okay.
You said that.
Daryl and Susan.
I did read it too.
Any questions or discussion?
Dan, this is, this is one way if you want to help us. I'd love to see if we could find different options to this. And I don't know with your connections or whatever, as long as you've been in. I'm voting yes only out of because I don't have another option.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Item 13, board policy, second reading, volume 37, number two, volume 35, number one. I'm not voting on that one tonight. And then item 14, board policies, volume 35, number two, volume 36, number two, volume 36, number two. Is that a typo? So let me start over with that one. Board policies, volume 35, number two, volume 36, that one should be number one. Then volume 36, number two, and volume 37, number one. We are voting on this one. I'll entertain a motion.
These are all state statutes. Therefore, so move.
Dave with a motion. Drew, second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to item 15, July 2025, corporation update. Board policies, admin guidelines and forms. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Susan with a motion. Dave with a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, moving on to item 16, approved publication of 2025 budget items, capital projects plan, bus replacement plan, and the notice to taxpayers regarding proposed fine appropriations and tax rates.
So move.
Second.
Dave with a motion. Drew with a second. Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Technology, we're approving the disposable of a. Was this in your packet?
Hold on a second. Okay, I got it.
So it's just a single page?
So move.
Second.
Jesse with a second.
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Are we disposing, are we just throwing them away? Are we seeing, are they usable by anybody or?
We recycle them.
With someone, okay. Right, it's also people.
Okay, again, have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item 18, transfer of remaining balance and is 1310 the total?
It's fund 1310.
Fund 1310, okay. For ECISS, at the end of the month, a Western payment.
This is because they moved? Yes. They moved.
Jessica with a motion. Jerry with a second. Any other questions or discussion?
This is still not the end of it because that's funds run by year and year, correct?
No, this fund is not. This one is the four corporations that put together for like legal fees and different things. It's not like the salaries of everybody. And the supplies, this is very limited.
This is not the remaining budget.
And we may not get it completely squared away by the end of the month. But that way we have permission so I can be.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to public participation.
Hi, welcome back.
Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
I just want, I just wanted to make the board aware that I'm the only one who should be approving change order because they cost us a lot of extra money in construction. So just to make you aware, I say no until we make sure we talk here in this board. Because if someone goes in and says, I want this changed or that changed, and the construction people do it, then we pay for it. If it's approved by me, then, you know, and I don't approve very many, to be very honest. So I just want to let you know. The other situation is, we've already discussed moving on with board policy and since we've approved some tonight, we just want to make sure we continue that process because we need to make sure we have all that in place. So that'll be coming forward too. Advisory groups, I'm used to having advisory groups and I would like to let you know. I believe in having a faculty advisory group, probably in each building. People can join. It's not a complaint session. It is, what can we do to make our school better? Also, parent groups, I believe in that. I believe in student groups. And we're gonna try to have some of those to come forward. I found out if you give students a pizza and a Coke, you can find out a lot of information. You know, they'll tell you a lot of stuff. And we just want to make positive things for the school. You know, not that, we don't have positive things, but I think it can be better to have open discussion. And, you know, the parents, all those type of people. It's not one where parents come and complain about a teacher. That's not what we're here, what we're here for. We're here to find out what can we make our school better? Also, I say this, a huge thank you to everyone who worked so hard this summer. Our custodians here, our maintenance guys, technology department, the bus drivers, all central office ladies, they've done a great job. I'm very happy to, lucky to have them. They've done fantastic and I want to especially thank those ladies. Principals, you're very fortunate to have the principals that you have because I think they're super. They do a great job. You know, they just support your school in a great way. You know, I get little notes, you know, things going on and I do my best to try to write them a little note back. I don't get them all until I got the computer all hooked up like I supposed to because I looked in, there was 180-some notes I had to return. I didn't get them all done. I'm getting close. Also, you got amazing teaching staff, I said, and other staff members. I'm really grateful to be a part of this corporation right now, this district. Looking forward to a fantastic year. You know, I don't understand though, going down to Liberty Elementary, the lunch ladies, they've done a great job. But I'll tell you, I got so many dag on chicken fingers the other day and I couldn't eat them all, you know? And that, but I always laugh. I go in the lunchroom and I said to a couple of kids and I said also out at College Corner, on the opening day, I was out there and I commend everything they're doing. You know, if you go up to a little kindergarten and you say, what are you having that lunch bag today? And they say, oh, I got Lunchables or I got this. And you say, can I get some? The answer is no, right off the bat. And I say, well, Ms. Karen didn't fix me a lunch today. How about it? Or you go down to the cafeteria and eat down there. I've not made all the rounds to the cafeterias, but, you know, they do a great job with the lunch program here. And I'm very good. You know, I, I didn't have a cheeseburger today though because Ms. Karen fixed cheeseburgers last night. So I said, no cheeseburger, but I'll take the other stuff. So that was it. So it's great. Thank you very much. We also want to have, and I didn't put this down, but I really think you have to do things to honor people. And I'm asking each one of the schools to bring a student of the month to you. And the teacher has to recommend them and then principals bring them to you and the teacher and the parents and the student here. And I, I'm not a big certificate person, just so you know that. We're gonna finally get them a little plaque. Because you give them a plaque, it's gonna go on the wall or someplace at home. If you give them a certificate, it's going in a drawer or maybe even in the trash. So I'm gonna push that forward and try to have one, you know, every school have one a month. And that, I just think it'll work. I've had it other places. And it's just honoring people and students, you know? And parents, you know, they're gonna come out to see that happen. So we're gonna do those things. So thank you very much.
Board comments?
If you're hungry, check out my granddaughter. If you go down to Liberty Elementary, the word on the street was she didn't even eat her lunch the first day because she was too busy cutting up with friends, right?
Look for a lunch bag she has.
I'm sure she packs good stuff, you know?
I want to thank the community for continuing this and money and for lunches. I think that everybody's in the plus. So that's all because of the community. I brought some in tonight, so thank you if you're watching.
On that, can I ask a question? Whoever has the answer can give it to me. We had a discussion about, there was a certain limit that if we could get to a certain point, everybody was free lunch or something like that and we were gonna try to make an effort. Am I crazy or weren't we gonna try to? So are we past that point or is that point still? Okay.
We're not quite there, but Jenny came in this morning and said she was gonna be talking to someone that she knows the family can't afford, that they did not fill out the free and produced online.
Okay.
And see if we can get people to help them do it because they may not allow. It's not an easy process. Y'all, I can't do it.
Okay.
And if I understand right, it, it doesn't necessarily matter if you qualify, if you're applying, that can be influential in what the district can.
And they need to understand too, that just because you don't qualify today, it changes the circumstances or, you know, you gotta work with comp entry or something, you're gonna get paid for seven days. Apply at that point because you will qualify then and it's good for the rest of the year. And they can qualify at the 11th and 30th with this school year.
I mean, is it worth putting in a student's packet? Or, I mean, do you feel like the word is out there? I mean, I don't want you guys dialing for dollars, basically, you know, calling one individual at home. I didn't know if there was some way we could reach.
I just, Karen Ashley, I've talked to several people and I've done the applications for them online, their permission. They'll give them all their information. Because a lot of them, cell phones, you cannot do one on a cell phone. You pay through and you got a better service than I do because mine doesn't work on the cell phone, any of the stuff. And that's what most people have. They don't have the computers or stuff.
Right.
But they don't work.
Well, we got some unusable ones if they need one.
Yeah. That's why it worked, kind of worked better when they had the end, everybody got together for the.
In-person registration.
In-person registration because somebody was there to help them. But now that it's all online.
Okay, okay. All right, just asking.
I mean, a lot will come to their schools and make an appointment is what we tell them when they call up.
We send dojo messages to our entire population and then we targeted some even specifically. So we have been really trying to hit the ones that we know need it, but I can't.
Appreciate the effort. I just think there's an easier way or.
Yeah, I just spoke to Jenny.
Do you feel like you got a response?
I don't know because I can't.
You don't see it.
You know what I'm saying? Like, it's like I'm doing all this work, but I don't know if I, you know what I mean?
Right, yes. Are we at like the same number from last year percentage-wise? Do you know?
Just getting started. I don't think we've got even what we had last year yet because application process.
But they can come to school and somebody would help them here?
Yes.
And same way it's called.
I think any school, somebody will help them.
If they have a SNAP card already, it's their, they're direct certified. So they just have to put that SNAP number in. Yeah.
Any other comments? During the public meeting at 8:04, there is an executive session following.